Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Here, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Vice President Palermo, District Four.
Let me pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to remind you, if you haven't heard already, to wash your hands very well. Social distance if you can, and obviously, wear a mask. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The City Council welcomes you to this meeting. We ask that as a courtesy to those in attendance that have business before us, that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Arbor View located southeast of 216th and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kyle Vole, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. With me today is Mark Stidola of Charleston Homes, sitting behind me. This is a fourth phase. Can we get this on the projector, please? Thank you. This is the fourth phase of a single-family residential development located southwest of 210th and Fort Street. Order on the north side is Fort. On the south side is a tree-lined waterway. They will have a three-to-one-plus-20 buffer section, and then to the west is a future NRD dam site. So, highly successful development out here. We've got, this phase is 260 lots, 196 single-family, 64 villas. We appreciate the planning staff working with us on some administrative cleanup of some replats to the south, and other than that, here for any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Items seven and eight can be considered together for national subdivision replat one, located at 4421 and 4427 South 76th Circle. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat.
The public hearing on items seven and eight begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Mark Westergaard with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. This is a minor plat to adjust some lot lines for access and building envelope reasons. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items seven and eight are approved, seven to zero. Items nine to thirteen can be considered together for Jobman Edition, located at 5110 Spalding Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from R435 district to R5 district. Item 10, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district in an R5 district and to approve the development plan. Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 13, a resolution to approve the Jobman Edition subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items nine through 13 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mark Westergaard, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. This is an infill project that creates four duplex units, or excuse me, four fourplex units in the area of 51st and Lafayette Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have you come to the mic just for a minute for me, please. The four fourplexes that you're talking about building, are they rentals or are they purchased, are they for purchase?
They're for sale units.
They're for sale units?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Thank you. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nine through 13 are approved, seven to zero. Items 14 to 19 can be considered together for Millwork Commons, located northeast of 14th and Nicholas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 14 and 15 are ordinances to rezone this property from CBD district and HI district to CBD district and HI district. Item 16, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the NCE overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 17, an ordinance to rescind the ACI-1 overlay district for this property. Item 18, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 19, a resolution to approve the Millwork Commons subdivision agreement.
Were we also going to do 24 at this time for the public hearing? We'll take the public hearing on items 14 through 19, and then item 27, we'll have two votes. One, yes, please.
Okay. Item 27, a resolution to approve the Millwork Parcel Eight Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan, located at 1200 North 12th Street, in an amount up to $3,425,000. A is amendment of the whole requested by the Planning Department for a new TIF amount of $3,781,663.
The public hearing on items 14 through 19 and number 27 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Katie Underwood with Olson, 2111 South 67th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Happy to answer any questions for the plating. And then there are others here that could answer questions related to TIF.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Deborah Christensen, Bluestone Development, 5110 Mayberry Street. I'm here to answer any questions on the TIF related to this project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. On 14 through 19? Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Approve amendment of the whole.
Was that your second? Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. One public hearing can be held for items 20 to 24 for Meridian Edition, located southwest of 72nd Street and West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be used communication in opposition. Item 20, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district in a GO district and to approve the development plan. Item 21, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat. Item 22, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 23, a resolution to approve the Meridian Edition subdivision agreement. Item 24, a resolution to approve the Meridian at 72nd and West Center Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan, located at 2808 South 72nd Street, in an amount up to $5,876,535.
The public hearing on items 20 through 24 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Councilmembers John Blumenthal, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of applicant Meridian Development. We're here before you today on both the PUD and tax increment financing request for the project. It's been before planning, and I believe you've had some sense of this back when we did the community redevelopment area. This is the former Shark Club and Quality Insight at 72nd and Center. My client intends to build a first-class 270-unit apartment complex at that important intersection in the heart of Omaha. We intend to create $49 million of economic development at this now dilapidated site. We're excited about this project, and we're here to answer any questions you may have today.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
My name is Terry Anderson, 811 Ontario Street Inn, Westgate. Council President Jarom and fellow council members, I appear before you today representing Westgate Neighborhood Association, and also as the lead person for Nextdoor Westgate Social Media Website, which at last count had 1,135 members from the neighborhood. I've lived in Omaha since 1981 and in Westgate since 1987. The apartment complex proposed by Meridian Development LLC became known to some in Westgate just before Christmas, in early December, at a meeting held by the City Planning Department at the College of St. Mary's. The meeting was a necessary step towards proclaiming the subject area blighted and eventually qualifying for tax increment financing. The meeting included planning department personnel, representatives from the developer, and many more residents of the neighborhood than they expected, that they usually see at such meetings. If nothing else, the sitting developer knew then that the neighborhood, especially residents bordering the project on 74th Street, Oak Street, and onward south on 72nd Avenue, was going to be involved. Of highest concern at the time was a proposal to open Oak Street into the apartment complex for emergency vehicle access. There was no access of any kind from the neighborhood into the former hotel and nightclub. Oak Street turned south into 72nd Avenue at the closest point to the hotel property. Residents were assured access would be restricted to fire personnel only because a gate could be opened only by fire personnel. They were also concerned about apartment guests parking on neighborhood streets that are already narrow and walking into the complex at the Oak Street entrance. But were told there would be no access to the apartment structures from the emergency vehicle access. Yet, the current map of the complex clearly shows a sidewalk leading from the neighborhood into the, right alongside the proposed emergency road and into the complex. The complex will have 270 studio, one and two-bedroom units, which could be expected to house one to four residents. Occupants could include UNO students, medical students at CHI Bergen Mercy, and young workers in the area. Some could be young families. But most would be individuals who would expect, who you would expect to have their own vehicles. Realistically, there could be 400 or more people living in the complex, and that's a lot of vehicles. You may notice there is just one way to enter or exit the proposed complex. With the 72nd Street entrance blocked since the hotel and nightclub closed, the only access for residents will be on the northwest corner of the property. There's a traffic signal there, but it also must accommodate traffic into and out of the mid-city medical aesthetics building and controls the connector ramps for traffic between West Center Road and 72nd Street. The developers have said studies show that one access point will be sufficient for traffic. After this complex is built, the apartments are filled and traffic is a nightmare even before getting onto a city street. We want the city to remember the neighbors' high opposition to opening Oak Street at all. The residents of 74th Street, Oak Street, and 72nd Avenue already know there are traffic problems on their streets. Motors have turned their streets, the streets in front of their family homes into a speedway shortcut between West Center Road and Grover Street, just to avoid 72nd Street traffic. The roads already are congested, especially 72nd Avenue, which is very narrow, narrower than Oak or 74th Street. Monday morning yesterday, I drove on 72nd Avenue and could barely, and didn't have much clearance for my mid-sized car. A fire truck would never be able to get through there without taking a few mirrors with it. We realize this project is nearing the end of the approval process. We also know property development is crucial for our progressive community. But some of the Westgate neighbors to this, neighbors to this project have lived there since before construction of the hotel even now being demolished. We all need to have some assurances that the speedway in front of their homes won't become even more congested with apartment complex traffic. Therefore, we respectfully request that this project be delayed so more opportunities can be made to see how to reopen the 72nd Street entrance. The City Public Works Department provided the developers with two options for a second access point under the property, both connecting onto Oak Street. Fortunately, that is not part of the final plat, but the thought remains. Access to 72nd Street, especially now with three lanes in both directions, is a much better option. But it would need to be done now, not after the complex has been built. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Mary Powell, 3005 South 72nd Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. My husband and I own the property directly to the south of the proposed Meridian project. Is it possible to get the projector on? I have some pictures that I want to show on the screen.
Please.
Pardon?
Raise the arm up and then place what you have on the elbow below it. Face up.
Okay. First of all, I would like to address the grading of the property. The site plans show...
And then to zoom in and out, you use the top of the device.
Okay. The blue on this map shows the location of our house. This was provided by the developer. They are changing the grade to our backyard here by, to their property of approximately five feet. We have a six-foot privacy fence that we put in when the, when we moved in next to the motel to provide privacy. So their five-foot grade is now going to go almost to the top of our privacy fence. So they're going to be up here and we're going to be down here. It defeats the whole entire purpose of our privacy fence to our property. So we request that the developer not be allowed to raise the grade above the grade of our backyard. Fencing for the property... Okay, they show at the bottom along here where the retaining wall is, and then the little circles show where they're going to have a four-foot fence apparently sitting on top of that retaining wall. You'll notice as you come through here, here's the retaining wall. This is a 10-foot area that is going to be an open grass area. They're saying it's going to be seeded with grass seed. So you have 72nd Street sidewalk here. You have the retaining wall coming off of 72nd Street down here. This is an open walkway for anybody to walk from 72nd Street through the property, through our six-foot privacy fence. Their five-foot grade plus their fence on top, so they basically have an alleyway that they can walk through that no one can see them. So they can jump the fence to get into our property. When the hotel closed down, the owner of the property built an eight-foot chain-length fence along the whole bottom section of that property to prevent individuals from entering that property to do vandalism. We've already had people jump our back fence to get to our house, and you're now creating this long alleyway that's not visible with anybody that they can get into our property, which we don't want. So we're requesting, when we did the six-foot privacy fence, we were able to have it go all the way out to Oak Street through a waiver to provide privacy. Since our six-foot privacy fence is now not going to provide us any privacy, we request that the, if this goes through, that the developer require, be required to put a 10-foot solid privacy fence along their property line at the top level from 72nd all the way out to Oak Street. We put in our fence for privacy and we want to respect our privacy. This complex is going to be, the plans say it's a one-building complex, five stories tall. The building is going to be 40 feet away from our property line. I was told initially they would have no windows coming out the north side of their building to look, or the south side of their building that could look into our backyard. I was told afterwards that that was false information. There will be windows out of that apartment. There will also be decks coming out of those apartments, five, six stories tall, looking out into our backyard. If they're going to do the decks, and if you're going to approve this, then we request that any of those decks that would face the south of any of the property along there be a solid blocked wall so they can't see into our backyard from the area. We were talking about the entrance that is currently there off of 72nd Street, which, here's 72nd Street, so this is the current entrance going in. This entrance already has a single lane. When they widened 72nd Street to three lanes wide, they put in a specific access road to get to the property. Instead of putting an access road off of Oak Street for emergency vehicles, which is going to be going down a very busy neighborhood. And if you've toured the neighborhood lately, there's not as many cars, but we are also in COVID-19. Pre-COVID, when you go down that street, you have cars parked on both sides of the street. And like Terry said, if you try to get an ambulance through there in an emergency, you're going to be taking out vehicles, you're going to be taking out mirrors. Why not leave that entrance open for emergency vehicle access? You could very easily post a sign right here where this existing sign is that says, "No left turn, emergency vehicle access only." Just like you have on the interstates where you have those lanes that you can turn, but people aren't supposed to turn, it's emergency vehicles only. So that would take care of the city's planning board's concern about congestion there. If that lane is for emergency vehicle access only, the public wouldn't be using it, it wouldn't be congested into the area. They could have a key to the gate to let the emergency vehicles in, the fire and the ambulance, to be able to do that. The apartment complex that was built right across from our backyard, this is across 72nd Street. You'll notice it is basically three stories above ground. You can see how they have a perfect view right over the fence to the backyard. And you have to figure this is probably at least 150 feet away from our backyard. So they're going to build a five-story apartment complex 40 feet from our backyard, two more stories taller than what you see here, with a perfect bird's eye view. Plus, they're going to change the grade, which is going to bring it up even higher above us. We're asking for the privacy to be respected for our neighborhood. We also request that if they are, if you do approve this project, that they be required to take their retaining wall all the way around to butt up to the sound barrier wall that is on 72nd Street so that there is no way that anybody can walk through this 10-foot alley to access property to do damage to even the apartment complex or anybody else there. We're asking you, on behalf of the safety of the neighbors that live in that neighborhood. The other thing that they had talked about is they're going to be doing landscaping. This is their landscaping plan. It is 100, our property line is 150 feet deep. They're going to plant just nine trees there, and they're going to be little trees. Maybe they told me about an inch in diameter. That's not going to provide us any privacy, any type of barrier between us and the apartment complex. It's going to take 10 to 15 years for those trees to grow up. That's a lot of space with that amount of time. On the fencing plan, you'll notice the fence stops here, which is about to the back of our property. And then they have put no fence coming all along here. There is no fence to separate from the neighbors coming all the way along Oak Street and no fence all along the west end of their property. So they're basically just giving this great big open area for anyone to go into. The project also does not conform with the City of Omaha master plan. The master plan states that Omaha Urban Forum must be carefully designed to eliminate land use conflicts and to reduce traffic congestion. This project will increase the traffic congestion on Oak Street. I was told by both city planning that they cannot end the project, they can't guarantee that the tenants are not going to park in our neighborhood. When our streets are already full, are they then going to be parking in St. Joan of Arc Catholic Church and school parking lot? Because their complex only has 385 stalls. And I was told several of those stalls are soft stalls for bicycle parking. How many people do we know use, depend on bicycles during the winter months in Nebraska? The Omaha master plan also says creation and preservation of healthy neighborhoods. The concept element states rezoning, conversion, and slip-in apartments will be discouraged. Goes on to say, "Creation and preservation of healthy neighborhoods. New development should be consistent with the character of older neighborhoods." We are an older neighborhood. This five-story apartment complex is not consistent with the ranch-style homes in our neighborhood. It says it has to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It requires that projects are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood in terms of scale, setback, building materials, landscaping, and parking. None of this project conforms with any of that. Goes on to say, "Rezoning can help encourage compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood by assuring land uses are compatible and housing density is similar." Adding 277 apartments in a four-acre area is not a similar density to our neighborhood. It goes on to say, "Retaining trees and other existing landscape features on construction sites can strengthen the relationship between the new development and the neighborhood." This would relate to keeping the same property grade as currently present. It goes on to state, "Maintaining the form and scale of the structure in the surrounding neighborhood in the new design contributes to the sense of, quote, 'fit' within the neighborhood, not only from the point of view of the casual observer, but by the neighbors as well." This complex does not fit within our neighborhood to have single ranch-style homes and then a five-story structure less than 40 feet away from your property with full view of your backyard. It says, "The city should work closely with the designer of construction projects to ensure neighborhood compatibility issues are addressed and that the best overall fit is achieved between the new project and the neighborhood." Lastly, it states, "Sometimes zoning does not match existing use within neighborhoods, leaving them vulnerable to land uses which pose a risk to the integrity of the neighborhood. Often, the nature of the incompatibility in this present zoning permits single-family residents to be converted to multifamily dwellings. The additional rental units constrain the capacity of the neighborhood in terms of parking, parks, and traffic congestion. This discourages existing homeowners, reducing their commitment to the neighborhood, resulting in further neighborhood disinvestment." The building, the project also talks about a rooftop clubhouse, which will be even higher and more viewing into our property. And we did talk about the public meetings, but the majority of my neighbors did not know anything about this project until May, when the letter came out and I went door-to-door and had petitions signed by over 80 people not wanting this project. I had reached out to Meridian with several questions. They did not reply to me with answers, which I think speaks highly. But I ask that you lay this project over, for them to relook at their plans, to keep that access point off of 72nd Street, to not have an alleyway between our property and the property for vandalism to occur for the safety of us, to keep our neighborhood safe, and to have the project in line with what is currently in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Would the proponent like a couple of minutes to respond? Mr. Blumenthal.
John Blumenthal, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of Meridian Development. I, I'm not going to respond to every point that Ms. Powell brings up, but I can say with certainty that there's nothing, there's no project, apartment project, which we believe we could satisfy her with. But I will say, with respect to Mr. Anderson's comments, a few things about connectivity. We've worked very hard with Planning Department, with Public Works, on connectivity. It's been a huge issue on this project for Public Works to make sure that they get the kind of connectivity that they need for the city. The pedestrian connectivity is part of... The pedestrian connectivity is part of the necessity of complying with the master plan and does comply with the master plan, which wants public connectivity and wants public pedestrian access for this project, which is why we've provided that at Public Works' urging. So, again, the connectivity's been a long back-and-forth of Public Works. We've tried to take into account what the neighbors want, but really, it's Public Works' direction that we've tried to reach at a consensus for what will work for everybody here. With respect to parking on the street, I would just say that there will be a self-contained garage on the property with 374 stalls. We don't anticipate any issue with not providing enough parking for this project. A few other comments, just real briefly. Again, we have tried to work with Public Works as much as we can on a grading plan, on landscaping. We believe that this project doesn't provide any real, we're trying to put in a good amount of trees. We want one and a half to two-inch caliber trees. We want this to be a great project. But again, there will be a neighbor, and we believe Ms. Powell doesn't want any neighbors at all. We're gonna be a good neighbor, we're gonna have, again, like Mr. Anderson said, UNMC residents who probably won't have time to be out doing bad things. So, we, we're excited about the project. Again, we've worked with Public Works on these issues, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Mr. Fansla, Plan Director? Well, you addressed the concerns about inconsistent, alleged inconsistency with the city's master plan, whether this project was vetted for the master plan elements, whether it was determined to be consistent with the master plan, and whether this is a slip-in apartment or anywhere near the definition of that.
Sure. Yeah, Dave Fansla, City Planning. Yeah, we reviewed the project, and there are many parts of the master plan that you can look, look at and, and find that it's compatible with the master plan. And the master plan talks about infill development and the reuse of old centers, bring them back to life. Talks about providing a variety of housing throughout our jurisdiction, which this does. Connectivity to the neighborhood, absolutely. You know, early on, and John will be able to tell you this, we had a conversation about connecting Seventy Second Ave. to Center Street.
With a roadway, right?
Correct, correct. And after looking at it, we came to the decision that, that wasn't necessary, but it would be important that we at least have pedestrian access. We view this project as part of the neighborhood, so the people who live there should have the opportunity to walk into the neighborhood, use, you know, walk to the school, walk to the church. So we felt that was very important, that there was some connectivity back to the neighborhood and that pedestrian access does that. This is by no means a slip-in apartment. Slip-in apartments, you know, there's a few of you who have them in your district, those are the, you know, turn site, the older neighborhoods where somebody might have torn down a single-family home, rotated a building, apartment building, and basically slipped it in where it doesn't address the street, and you have parking where the sidewalk should be. So, in no means, by no means is this a slip-in apartment.
And in terms of the parking stalls and parking requirements, both in code and in experience, such as with spaces or with the project in, at 51st and Mayberry or the Boss project in my neighborhood, has there been any, any issues with people spilling into the neighborhood where we've gotten complaints?
Not that I'm aware of, and thanks for bringing the parking up. The PUR, as you all know, sets up the opportunity to look at the projects on a, by project-by-project basis, and if there are waivers needed, there's some exchange for those waivers. Instead of going to the Zoning Board of Appeals, they come to Planning Board, City Council. But the PUR tool dictates that, that the project must meet urban design standards, so building materials, the highest standard of building that we have. So we, we build those waivers, if you will, into the PUR. This PUR does not include a parking waiver, so the site, as designed per the zoning code, there is no parking waiver needed.
And I would just note anecdotally that, you know, this, whenever there's these projects proposed for neighborhoods that have not had them, an apartment complex before, there is a somewhat uneasiness with existing residents, and that's expressed in terms of, well, what's this change gonna do to our neighborhood? And that's understandable. My neighborhood went through it just over a year ago, and our experience hasn't been what the, the opponents had forecast and projected it would be. And particularly just west of my neighborhood and the Exarban, Elmond Park neighborhood, where the two, was it 240 or 50 units in, at 51st and Mayberry?
Yeah.
That's fully integrated and connected to the neighborhood, and it just hasn't been the parking complaints there or with the Duke. That's a 200-plus unit apartment complex. So, while I get the concerns and the disruption that the neighborhood experiences, because, you know, that's something my family, our neighbors, people, you know, we go to church with, we're concerned about. But in the end of the day, the representations made by your department, by the traffic engineers, both internal to the city who review these things, and the engineers that are hired by the development team who know these traffic impacts, they just don't have the experience of panning out in terms of the, the opposition. I would note in here, in this project, it was, it's somewhat ironic that there's concerns about increased traffic on Seventy Second Avenue and Oak in the neighborhood when the roadway that Public Works had originally suggested and you suggested from planning be installed is no longer a part of the proposal. So, I'm familiar with the neighbor, the neighborhood. I've, I've been through the neighborhood, I walked the neighborhood when I was running for office. I drove the neighborhood again recently, and I've had constituents that I've met with in the last year just south of here. And I don't see if it's a concern now that, okay, well, before COVID hit, we had people parking on both sides of the street. And I would say there were, because that was my experience. But it didn't appear to me that the roadway wasn't wide enough then for an ambulance or fire truck to get through if needed. So then why would it be now? And if there were, in theory, this big party that was gonna happen, it would be a lot easier to park if they needed to, guests off-site, to be at the office complex immediately west and walk into the facility from the main access point than to come on Seventy Second and Oak and traverse uphill over retaining wall if they go that way, or just uphill from that direction. So I don't see that that, that concern, like my neighborhood had with the Boss project, is panning out. It's, these projects are similar in that way, the Boss and this one, because the Boss, since the main entrance is off Saddle Creek, not too far from Baker's, people said, well, where, how else are the, the guests gonna get in there? You know, they're gonna park on Pacific, they're gonna park on 48, and they're gonna go through our yard, and they're gonna go block all the traffic, you know? It just didn't happen. So, I think, in, in the scheme of things, I, I took a tour, it was a virtual tour, because, you know, with COVID, things in Kansas City are, you know, pretty more, a little more intense than they are here, so I didn't go down to Kansas City to see the Meridian project there. I view this one as a sister project to it. And I, so I got on and did a virtual tour, and it's, it's first-rate. It's, it's, these are high-quality developers that are going to have people whose rents, in many cases, exceed many of ours, who have mortgages. So, from that respect, if this project and this site and this location weren't there, I don't know what else realistically would be available to do at a density level that would make the investment even cash flow.
Yeah. I won't talk about the cash flow, but I will agree with you that, you know, often we hear at Planning Board and we, and you folks here at Council on how these types of projects are gonna change neighborhoods and the problems that come along with them. I've been doing this a long time, and I haven't heard any of those concerns once projects are built. So, I, I just, we just don't see it, right? We just don't get calls into our office about how bad the project has been for any of these neighbors you talked about. The two projects you mentioned, the Zag and the Boss, I have a family member who lives at the Zag, and I'm there quite often, and there's always enough parking. I don't see any parking where it shouldn't be, right? It's, people aren't parking away from there and walking to their apartment complex. They tend to, you know, they tend to know what they're doing, they, they know the market, they know who their clients and who their residents will be, and they've worked out pretty well for our city.
Again, that's, that was a, about a four-acre parcel, as I remember it.
Yeah, close to it, yeah, maybe a little smaller, actually.
And it's, it's within a contained residential neighborhood, and it works.
Works well.
So I, I'm, I get the concerns, I, I hear them, I understand them, and it's something that my own family and neighbors went through, but I, it's, I asked the legal department previously, does this, does this comply with city law and code? Yes, it does. Where the PUR is involved, it's consistent with the master plan elements, and it will provide a much-needed housing component in this part of the city, so. Is there a?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
And this will be for items 20 to 23?
Yes.
Okay. Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Your motion on 24?
Go move.
Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 25, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3737 Lake Street from GI District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 25 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Carol Iry. I'm at 3719 Ohio Street, and it'd be nice to have some new neighbors. Let them move in. That building's been empty ever since I bought my house. They're good people. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 26, an ordinance to rezone property located at 4723 South 49th Avenue from DR District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 26 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 28, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Exarban Suites Omaha located at 7270 Cedar Street.
The public hearing on item 28 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Ryan Ricky with Fraser Stryker, 409 South 17th Street, here with Paul Curley, who'll be the liquor license manager for CPG Hotel Management, commonly known as Exarban Suites. We're here to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 29, an application to consider a Class CK liquor license for Jams Grill and Bar located at 7814 Dodge Street.
The public hearing on item 29 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. John Skrikus, representing Kuchel Management.
Welcome.
Here to answer any questions.
Your address? We need your name and address.
John Skrikus, 1550 Skylark Drive.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a second to recognize John and his family. We're working on a few items here that are restaurant and bar-related, and I wanted to note the passing of his father recently, who was the founder of the Greek Islands Restaurant, one of the great establishments in the city, and really respect the work he did there and the, and your family as well, and definitely support this item today.
Thank you, Pete. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. Motion approved.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 30, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for The Corner Kick located at 16268 Evans Plaza.
The public hearing on item 30 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Paul and Rachel McCray, 17057 Weir Street, Omaha.
Happy answering questions?
Happy answering, any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton.
Hold on one second.
Hold on, don't go away.
Don't go away. No, it does, it's an interesting name, The Corner Kick. What's, what's the business? What, just tell us a little bit about the, the new?
Street Tacos, we have one location already at 138th and Millard Avenue, so this is gonna be our second location. Street Tacos, Mexican food, wings, tequila cantina, have 95 great tequilas.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We, yeah, it's all about soccer. It's.
I was just curious.
The Corner Kick.
Sounds fabulous. I'll, I'll try it soon. Thank you. With that, I move to approval.
Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
I have a question, sir. I have, I have been the one in Miller, but I'm, I have an interest. Are you up to date on your restaurant taxes?
Yes. So there was a, during COVID, for March, our CPA, Jeff Kramer's, he spread out March and April, from what I guess, but that's the only thing that I know of. But, so, the answer is yes.
Okay. I was looking at the records and indicated, but since you said it's been cleared up.
Oh, yeah, it, it was, it was, I don't know why it wasn't registered, that when he spread those two payments during COVID, that was it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a motion, a second roll call, please.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 31, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Patron Sports Bar located at 6801 Railroad Avenue, A's Communications and Opposition.
The public hearing on item 31 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yeah, my name is Morgan Rubio, from 6801 Railroad Ave. I'm trying to open the, the bar. My English is not really good, so.
Thank you. Stick around in case there's any questions. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rubio, let me ask you a couple of questions. We, we have some opposition to this license that you're applying for, but I think it has to do with the establishment before you. So, were you at all affiliated with the previous license holder that was in this building?
No, sir.
No. And then let me ask you one other question. Reading through the application, I found it interesting that, I knew it as the Triangle, and it looked like you had down the Triangle Bar as a place of previous employment, or no? Did I read that wrong? Did you ever work at the Triangle Bar?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's make sure this bar is like the Triangle Bar, not the previous bar, and we'll have no problems.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Item 32, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Chipotle Mexican Grill located at 333 North Saddle Creek Road.
The public hearing on item 32 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Ryan Ricky with Fraser Stryker, 409 South 17th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. I- I have here with me Brian Hexel, happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. It's a good addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Place looks great. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 33, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Lux located at 5018 Underwood Avenue.
The public hearing on item 33 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hello, Dan O'Brien, 5515 Howard Street, 68106, here to answer any questions.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Dan, if you could just for a minute?
Yeah.
Just a couple of questions for you. I noticed, this is the old Acadian Grill, and I noticed the sign has already changed to Lux, so I was wanting you to talk about your business plan a little bit, and tell us a little bit about the restaurant.
Yeah, it's a live music venue, serving small plates, so lettuce wraps, flatbreads, chicken wings, multiple styles, fresh cut fries. I put in a stage and I'm couching it out more. You know, the gold couch that was there originally is still there, then I'm rounding out the couches on the, the two round tables you might be familiar with. I took the partition down, so there's not a bad seat in the house.
Great. And so, it's all inside music, right?
Yes.
And is it dinner too, or is it mostly centered around music?
Small plates.
Okay.
I brought some menus if you wanted to see them, because I figured you might.
Yeah, leave them with the clerks. Well, they'll share them. Well, I want to say, welcome to the neighborhood. I assume Acadian is consolidating back to its site at 114th Street.
Yes.
It's a great restaurant, too, and pleased to see you continue there. There's been a couple of long-term restaurants in Denny that have closed recently, I think, due to COVID, so it's nice to see this space turn over and, and also be a productive new business.
I think it's something the neighborhood has wanted, or that part of town since Travado's closed, really.
Yeah.
It won't be that, you know, but enjoy it.
I look forward to attending. Thanks.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
We had a motion a second, but we'll take another one, I guess. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 34, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Come and Go 7703 located at 1180 Capitol Avenue.
The public hearing on item 34 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Janelle Bowen, 4810 North 175th Avenue, and I'm here with any, for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 35, an application to consider a Class M liquor license for Infinity located at 2615 South 120th Street.
The public hearing on item 35 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, sir. Shane Harrington, 5510 North 83rd Street, here in Omaha, Nebraska.
Welcome, Mr. Harrington. Would you mind, at the pre-council, you weren't there, there were some council members wondered what, what the purpose of your.
Yeah, so.
Reclassifying.
Yeah, so, due to COVID, the idea of opening a nightclub, dance club with, you know, 200 people packed on a dance floor, it, it just doesn't seem practical right now. And as you probably know, launching a new business, you can't really kind of do it. It has to be ready to go, 200 people dancing, you know, you know, against each other, you know, to make a nightclub work. So, to be able to get some people in there, but keep a social distancing until society's ready, till we have a cure or whatever, changing it to a bottle club license, I thought, would be best. It allows me to get the liquor out of Club Omaha, which is something that, you know, we had all kind of decided needed to be done, and so, we'll have, you know, BYOB, basically, a bottle club at Infinity, get the liquor out of Club Omaha itself, so then, you know, we're abiding by the, you know, rules that, that you guys wanted us to, to do. And that was just my, my best way of making this work in this kind of bad situation that COVID's brought to us. About a week before I was gonna order the liquor for Infinity, COVID hit and all the bars shut down, and, and so, you know, we never even, you know, we never even got a chance to get open.
Okay, well, stick around just in case.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Please, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Shane?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna have some questions, but you just said something that kind of piqued my interest. What wicker was at Club Omaha?
We're doing, we were always doing the BYOB.
At Club Omaha?
Yes. Yes. And part of our agreement was, we would drop all the lawsuits, and then, as soon as we opened up Infinity, we would remove the liquor from Club Omaha and sell liquor at, you know, Infinity and, and Club Omaha would be completely a dry club from then on out.
Well, I was gonna start by asking, who does your social media? Because I'm looking at something that says, I, I don't know if, yeah, it is from Twitter. Club Omaha's been killing it, so we decided to expand our hours, keep up with all of you, and we will be open on the 4th of July, so when you're done with your fireworks, come party with us from 10 till 5 a.m. It's only $20 to get in, and you can bring your own liquor.
Yes, sir.
I tell my kids that, you know, whatever you do on social media, it, it's out there forever.
Yeah.
And it, it can come back to bite you.
Yeah, no, we don't make any, any corn that we have liquor in there.
Hold on, please. You should.
I mean, I have emails from the City of Omaha where we came to an agreement that, that this is how we would move the liquor out and approve the liquor license and then drop the lawsuits.
I'm letting you talk, just so the hole can get deeper. Go ahead.
No, it, it's fine. I, I'm not here to, I'm not here to hide anything. This was an agreement I made with the city, so.
July, July 16, 2019, City Council meeting. Number of questions, I asked them. One was, okay, I'm reading this, pardon me for my bad grammar when I was speaking, but, okay, and that's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna be later to, but as long as you're here and we're on that issue, so you'll concede to drop the, oh, wait, the, the K license, that was another one, but, hold on, I thought I had it right here. Okay, so, I say, okay, and then, in the, in the letter that I believe your attorney wrote to one of the city attorneys, you had, or at least he had represented, that you were to receive a liquor license for Rehab Lounge, or soon-to-be Hustler Club, that Omaha, that Club Omaha would be alcohol-free permanently, and then you interjected, yes, yes, we would, and I continued on, that you would agree to do that as well, and you responded, yes, there would be no alcohol ever again in Club Omaha.
Yes, that's exactly what I said. As soon as we opened up Infinity, there would not be any liquor in Club Omaha ever again.
That's not what it says. That's not what it says.
Well, it doesn't say, it doesn't not say that either, though. There's nothing that specifically says.
It says you're never going to have alcohol in Club Omaha again.
Yeah, once I have another location open that I can make money and not lose my entire business. If I would have pulled all the liquor out of Club Omaha and then not had Infinity open, I would have, I would have had no business.
And this was part of the record that went to the Liquor Commission, and, and the, and you were granted the license. You were granted the license.
But we were never able to open because of COVID.
You never picked it up. You were granted the license, so I'll even concede to what you just said. But you were granted the license, and you chose to continue to serve or allow alcohol into Club Omaha, when you, on the record, and I'm glad I asked it for the record, you on the record said, there would never be alcohol ever again in Club Omaha.
Well, then, I spoke wrong, or you misinterpreted me. What I meant to say was, as soon as I had Infinity open, I would pull the liquor out of Club Omaha, because that's the only way Club Omaha would even be open. We wouldn't be here talking right now.
That's not what it says, and you were granted the license. So, again, I'll, maybe I'll concede that. I'm not the attorney here. I'll leave that to the city attorneys to make that argument, but even if I were to concede the point, that you were granted, that you received the license, you were still allowing alcohol in Club Omaha.
Yeah, but I never received the license. There was a license for me to pick up, and then COVID hit, and we never were able to open, so we never picked up the license because we couldn't open, sir.
I, I'm not, I'm not interjecting myself into your conversation, because again, I think the hole keeps getting deeper, because we have it on record, there were very clear questions asked, there were very clear representations made on your behalf, that this is what would happen, and that's why I was a little surprised when I received these copies of the, the Twitter, the tweets about bringing in your own liquor, because I thought, my God, that can't really be true, because he made the reference, he made the, stood in front of this council and made representations that there would not be alcohol in Club Omaha. So, my point being is, is this, is that you're in here asking for a Class M, and you've explained why, I think we all had some questions as, as to why, but if you were to get the Class M, what would then happen over at Club Omaha? Which is right next door.
Of course, once we closed, or opened up Infinity and people had a place to drink, because otherwise, I've got to let them drink in the parking lot, which is legal under, you know, tailgating rules in, in Omaha, because you're able to drink in parking lots, and, and we've already talked to the city attorney about that, and I don't want that. I want a safe place for them to drink, where we can, I think we all agree, make sure that, you know, we're taking care of the liquor, that we're not over-serving. It's the reason you wanted a liquor license for a bottle club, and passed new laws to stop bottle clubs, because you were concerned that people would be over-drinking and things like that, so that's what we can do at Infinity. We can regulate their drinking, we can have a bartender who pours their drinks, who makes sure they aren't served too many drinks, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. So, I, I, part of the reason for bringing this up, and I, and I appreciate you acknowledging that you said these things, even though they are on the record and we have a transcript of it, is that if, if this goes to the liquor, well, whatever the recommendation is of this body, as it goes to the Liquor Commission, if it shows that you're making misrepresentations, the Liquor Commission may look unfavorably upon that and not grant you a license.
Sure, I understand. And I've been in touch with Hobert Rup and on a number of different issues.
Well, I'm sure there, maybe they need to be reminded of the representations that you made on the record here on July 16th of 2019.
Sure, I understand.
I'll see if any other council.
My intention was not to mislead you at all, sir.
I'll see if any other council members have any questions at this point.
We have other lights. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Well, yeah, I just have a question for legal, although I think I could answer it myself, but it seems to me that in order to have alcohol in an establishment such as Club Omaha, you'd have to have a license. Either a bottle club license or a liquor license. So, at this point in time, I believe Mr. Harrington's been operating Club Omaha in violation of our liquor laws. Am I correct?
Is Mr. Wees in here?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington, you can step away. Because our lawyers can answer that question.
Mr. Wees in from City Law Department.
Ryan Wees in, Assistant City Attorney. Legislative Bill 1120 in the 2018 legislative session amended the liquor control laws to define and include bottle clubs. Section, Nebraska Vice Statute 53-103, Section 3 defines a bottle club as "an operation whether formally organized as a club, having a regular membership list, dues, officers, and meetings or not, keeping and maintaining premises where persons who have made their own purchases of alcoholic liquor congregate for the express purpose of consuming alcoholic liquor upon the payment of a fee or other consideration." Then, further on, the bill amended Nebraska Vice Statute 53-186.01, Subsections 1 and 2 to declare, "It shall be unlawful for any person owning, operating, managing, or conducting any bottle club, dance hall, restaurant, cafe, or club, or any place open to the general public to permit or to allow any person to consume alcoholic liquor upon the premises except as permitted by a license issued for such premises pursuant to the Act."
So, somebody that's been allowing the alcohol, that would be a violation of the law. They could be criminally cited, correct?
It, it does appear that you could be cited for a violation of, of this section, yes.
And, Mr. Wees in, you were here when Mr. Harrington was here, and I, I don't remember how long ago it was, but it was, it wasn't just right before COVID, it was quite a while ago, when we reached these agreements and we went ahead and voted in favor of giving him a liquor license for the Infinity bar that was next, next door.
I was an attorney for the city at that time, although I believe Mr. Acosta Trejo was handling liquor issues at that time.
That's right. But since then, you recall that, and they got their liquor license for Infinity Bar, correct?
Correct. The Liquor Control Commission entered an order on October 4th, 2019, it looks like, approving the license, and I believe the application indicates that the license was actually issued in March of 2020. It just wasn't picked up.
Okay. So, it just wasn't picked up. All right. I, I, I think, I think I've got all the information I have. I mean, the, the fact that it's on the record, there was no misunderstandings, I think it was extremely clear when Mr. Harrington was down here getting the liquor license for Infinity, and then to stand up here today and admit to violating the law this whole time, blatantly violating the law when he has two pending charges currently with the club, I am not going to be in favor of granting any kind of liquor license at this point in time.
Thank you. Council Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wees in, I have a question for you. With the discussion, it triggered a little bit, so let me ask you a question with what we've heard on the record and the license that was either not picked up for whatever reason. So, since Mr. Harrington's been before us, has the Omaha Police been called his establishment for any reason?
Ryan Wees in, Assistant City Attorney. I believe that the Police Department, or perhaps Douglas County Dispatch, did receive several complaints for violations, or potential violations of directed health measures that were in effect at various times. That's the extent of my knowledge as to, to that, though, so you may have to ask a representative from the Police Department that specific question.
And since nobody's here, probably to answer that question 100%, it would probably be fair to say that they wouldn't know to, to get them for not having a liquor license either, so, that's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Wees in. Mr. Harrington, you know, if he's, regardless of what his representation was, it appears that, you know, he, he, as he says, if I was hiding something, I was hiding it in plain view for the world to see, that it seems to me somewhat odd if, if he had the understanding that he couldn't do what he was doing, that to go about doing what we're saying the law prohibited him from doing, so, you know, he was advertising what he was doing, police were there, he, the commission would know. So, what do you have to say about him and his saying, everybody knew, the law department knew, this is something Liquor Commission, city lawyers knew about, I wasn't hiding anything, it was wide, wide open. And I know what he said on the record, I agree with the interpretation made, but how does that happen? How does he get to the point where he's of this position and understanding in, in plain view? And nothing would happen? There's not a tavern report? There's, there's not a arrest? There's, there's no state liquor enforcement? There's, I mean, so, what do you have to say to explain that?
Ryan Wees, Assistant City Attorney. I don't know that I'm able to represent to the council why the Attorney General's Office or the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission did not take any enforcement actions for potential violations of the Nebraska Liquor Control Act. The license is a license issued by the state, not the city of Omaha. The council is only a recommending body. I would say that that is not necessarily an issue that is before the council to consider today. The issue, the limited issue that's before the city council is pursuant to Nebraska Vice Statute 53-132, whether or not the applicant is fit, willing, and able to provide the proposed services within the city on the premises where the, and premises as described in the application, and whether or not the applicant can conform to all provisions and requirements of, and rules and regulations adopted pursuant to the Nebraska Liquor Control Act. So, what the council should consider is based upon the information that it has, whether it believes that the applicant is of sufficient character to comply with these rules, not necessarily whether one department of state or local government has enforced these rules in the past or not.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington, I have a couple of questions. You may want to stick close by. I see other lights turning on.
Yes, sir.
We need your name.
Shane Harrington, 5510 North 83rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
One of the questions Mr. Harding asked you, and I don't remember what you said hearing an answer. So, if you did, please repeat it.
Yes, sir.
I think he said, what is going to happen to Club Omaha if this gets approved? Whether it's recommendation here or ultimately with the Liquor Commission, who decides thumbs up or down? What happens to that entity?
It just, all liquor is removed permanently from the premises because then people will have a safe place to drink next door at Infinity, at the bottle club, or eventually at the nightclub if COVID ever allows, you know, that to happen.
And would there be any BYOB?
No, no, there would, no BYOB, no liquor. There wouldn't be liquor allowed in the establishment. That's actually per the Liquor Commission and Hobert Rup. That was a requirement if we opened up Infinity, that there could be no liquor in Club Omaha.
I, I tend to believe that even though the representation was made, and normally that would be an automatic no for me, that you weren't, you weren't hiding anything. I mean, if you were, if you were a, you know, criminal mastermind, you know, you're pretty bad at that because you were broadcasting to Omaha and, and in social media, and you're advertising what you were doing. But I'm curious as to who at the city you were dealing with that was, or at the state that was giving you the okay and the interim to do the BYOB in the club?
Well, it was in September of 2019. We reached a settlement agreement that basically said that we would, once we were open, that we would remove the liquor from Club Omaha and also drop all of our lawsuits.
I'd love to see a copy of that.
Yeah, I can, I can get you all that information today from my attorney. So, I don't have it obviously in my hand. I just have a few notes. I didn't know, you know, the extensive, you know, talks that we were going to have. But I do have letters and emails of all of that.
But that isn't, you went to the commission in September of 2019.
Yeah, but I didn't actually get my license till middle to end of March, which is when COVID, the, the directive health measures also started, was the end of March or beginning of April. The reason it took so long is the city had lots of issues with the building. Even though the building had a current liquor license, for some reason, when I took over it, there was all kinds of things that needed to be done to bring it up to code. And so, that's why it took till March to finish the building and have it ready. We were working on it the whole entire time. We weren't doing some stall tactic or anything. I spent close to $200,000 remodeling that building. I, I, I needed to make money. I, I want to make money. And, and so, I wanted to open a big dance club, and, and I could have made some good money. Instead, I'm $200,000 in the hole and just trying to open up something so that we can appease the, the city and the state with the liquor problem that they have with Club Omaha. You know, because if I wasn't going to do that, I would have never entered the settlement agreement. You know, I had a hearing that was going to the Nebraska Supreme Court. And I had my day in court even with them. And I dismissed that before we went based on the idea that once we got something open in the Infinity location, I could remove the liquor from Club Omaha. And though it wasn't a perfect situation for me, or for you, that it was something that we all were willing to compromise on, and that's how I thought it was.
You've answered my question.
Okay.
I, I asked the clerk if there's time in the law that we're given in which to submit our recommendation. And there's a couple of weeks remaining.
Yes, sir.
If the council wanted to see this, this agreement.
Yes, sir.
There would be time to do it before we decide. I'll leave it up to the council. I, I'm interested in seeing this before we make a recommendation because to me, if there is such an agreement, and if that agreement says what you say, then notwithstanding what you represented, you would have had a subsequent agreement, at least from law.
Yes.
That what you were doing was okay by them.
Yeah, and I'll, and I can provide you with everything if you're willing to take a look at it, of course.
All right. So, we have more lights. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Actually, I believe Councilmember Melton's light was on before mine. I jumped in front, but I'll, I'll go after she does.
Okay. Councilmember Melton.
Well, and, and I just want to say, I don't, I don't believe even the city attorney can give you, I can't call Mr. Coosie right now and say, hey, you know, I really want to go 70 miles an hour down Dodge Street. I'm, so can I go ahead and violate the law? I mean, you can't get permission to violate the law, and it's currently a violation. I mean, the fact that maybe people were busy during COVID not monitoring your social media, which, by the way, I haven't. That hasn't been a place that I've wanted to look at since March. But I guess had I done that, then we could have called attention to the fact that you were in violation of the law. You can't be, and you keep saying remove alcohol, which would indicate not even just a BYOB. You're providing alcohol in a business where you have no license to do so.
Well, it's just BYOB.
And that's what, and that's what you did. In addition, you still have, Mr. Wees said, well, as long as you're, it doesn't matter what it is, as long as you're a fit and proper person to have a liquor license, then we should approve it. But I would say that continues violations of the law. And right now, there's two potential ones that are pending for trial in August. It appears with the AG's office for violating the, the DHMs that were in place during the COVID.
Yeah. Those are mistakes, and I'll win those cases, but yes.
Well, to me, this is kind of a pattern of how you operate as a business owner. I'm going to do what I want, when I want, however I want. I mean, in addition, you, you know, you continuously talk about how you do this for the women in, in your club, that there's also another lawsuit alleging that you're not paying your employees the way you should. You have them as a 1099 employees when they should be W2 employees.
Yes.
And so, that's another problem.
Well, no, it's not a problem.
On how you're even treating.
No, it's, it's not a problem. I'll, I'll get a six-figure settlement from that. So, yeah, that's not a problem.
What I'm saying is, there, there's a pattern here that I see, and that's the problem that I have.
Okay.
Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Okay. So, I just want to have, have this for the record, too. So, the settlement agreement that you struck in, was it September?
September of 2019.
You're representing that, that says, there's language in there that says, specifically, or paraphrasing, that once I open for business.
At Infinity.
That there will no, be no more alcohol at Club Omaha.
No more BYOB at Club Omaha.
Okay.
And then in return.
We'll see what that says if that's where we get. Hold on, hold on, hold on, please.
I was just giving you the full thing that it said that I can remember. I saw you had it all on the record. Whoops.
Did, in that settlement agreement.
Yes, sir.
Did the city live up to its end of the bargain?
I don't believe so, no.
What, what didn't the city do?
The city violated my civil rights by coming in during the directive health measure the first time when I wasn't listed as one of the businesses that was even on the directed health, health measure. And then the second time, they entered my business with a day warrant at night. And that violates my civil rights as well. And that's why those two tickets will be dropped. But I believe those did violate the agreement on their behalf.
Were, were there, were there any agreements that the city lived up to? I'll, I'll get back to that in a second. Were there any agreements in that settlement that the city lived up to?
Yes, they granted me a liquor license approval to go to the next step. And they also didn't ticket me for having liquor in, having BYOB in Club Omaha during the time I was getting my liquor license and the club open next door.
I wonder if the city should have waited until you were open for business before they lived up to those parts. So, the other thing you just said, which I find interesting, I'm going to have to go back through. If, if the council does, I know we have some time on, not time today, but weeks' time maybe to lay this over. What you just said a minute ago, too, about law enforcement coming into your establishment.
Yes.
I, I wasn't prepared for this part of it today, but I, I'm going to go back through the, the record. Again, I hope my kids are listening and understand that what you put out there is there forever.
Yes.
But I think you made representations at that same July 16th meeting that you would allow law enforcement in there at any time.
Yes, once we were open at.
Oh, that was another one? Once he got the liquor license?
Yeah, because I'm not going to give them everything and get nothing in return. There was not a guarantee that the, the state was even going to approve it. Just because you guys approved it didn't mean they were, so.
But the state did approve it. So, I, I, I understand now that it all was predicated upon you being open for business.
Yeah, because one thing could have led to the other business.
And that's when everything was to be taken care of.
Yeah.
Okay. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, Mr. Harrington, if we laid this over a week, could you get all the documents that, that the council members have?
Yes, sir.
Motion to lay over one week.
Quickly.
It'd be until August 11th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to lay over until August 11th.
We have a motion. I'll second it for discussion and vote. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Mr. Harrington, I'd request that you get your documentation to the clerk by next week. So, we have a week to, and Mr. Wees can.
Okay. Yes, I'll get it all to you in the next 24 hours.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You might want to put tab on it.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 36 through 46 were held July 21, 2020. Roll call. Oh, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to take one moment to address item number 46. Co-sponsor of this item, and I appreciate my co-sponsors, Councilman Jerem and Councilman Gray. This would add two categories to our Fair Housing Code that would prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. So, eight years ago, we adopted these same provisions into city code to prevent discrimination in the workplace. And if you recall, at the time, it took us two, two attempts. And we did it with four votes, and it was very contentious. But was the right thing to do, and has proven to be the right thing for our city. I would note that today, I've had zero opposition to this measure, which is similar in nature as it applies to housing. And to me, that feels like progress. It is the right thing to do, and for the future success of our city, to become a more welcoming and more diverse city, I think is a very important statement to make here today. And I would also note, and I think my colleagues feel the same, that we hope the state itself will do the same thing. They have not yet, but there is substantial conversations finally happening at the state level on these issues, too, which needs to happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I just want to say, Dr. Thompson gave a great presentation last week. And he mentioned mentors quite a bit. And I just want to thank Dr. Thompson, who's been one of my mentors for the last seven years that I've been here. And I want to thank him for sharing his wisdom and thoughts and everything else. So, thank you, Dr. Thompson, for that.
Thank you.
And I, I agree and support that and, and support the ordinance.
And as I look back at where we've come, and we've had public hearings where the topic of housing has come up, and there have been members of, of the GLBTQ community that have come in and kind of challenged us to expand the ordinance that we passed a few years ago, that prohibits discrimination in employment, to housing. And so, we heard you. We accepted that challenge, and, and here we are today. It's on consent agenda. The last time the employment discrimination ordinance came out, this whole room was filled. It was just really a tense moment in, in the air. It was a hotly debated issue, but it's amazing how far we've come in just a few years. So, I'm pleased to co-sponsor this and be voting for it. We have a motion, a second roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 47 through 60, and 62 to 63, begin at this time. Item 61 has been taken off consent agenda, and will have its own public hearing. If you wish to address the city council on Items 47 through 60, and 62 and 63, the public hearing on those items begins at this time. For any proponents or opponents on those items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name and address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. The public hearings on those items is closed. Is there a motion on those items? Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 61, a resolution to approve the purchase from lawmans and shooters supplying ink in the amount of $25,865.47 for the purchase of night vision equipment for the Omaha Police Department.
Before opening the public hearing on Item 61, it's my understanding that Amber Parker, the mayor's office's grant writing director, will make a presentation.
Amber Parker, Mayor's Office. I don't have a presentation for you today, but I do, yeah, I am here to answer any questions that you might have about this item. So, I know that there are some questions.
But Amber, I think it would be very helpful if you could explain what the grant is, where the money comes from, and if we don't use it, where it goes, and what we can do with it.
Right. So, this item is being purchased out of the fiscal year 2018 State Homeland Security Grant Award. That award comes from the state of Nebraska. It's a direct allocation to the tri-county area, which includes Sarpy, Douglas, and Washington Counties for the purposes of homeland security. This item was included in the package that was accepted by council December 11th of 2018. If we can talk about the application process for the State Homeland Security Grant, it, for this award, would have began in 2017 with the local partners. They submit their priority projects to the state, and then those items are approved by the state. The state allocates the city of Omaha as a fiscal agent this award money. Any grant dollars that are not spent on the approved projects would revert back to the state. And the state would then be the entity who would decide where those dollars could be spent. So, I'm, sorry, it's hard. There's a total amount of $30,000 allocated for this purchase. Any of the funds that are unspent will revert back to the Nebraska Emergency Management Association. They would not stay with the city of Omaha for reallocation.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Are there any proponents on Item 61?
Captain Mark Desler, Omaha Police Department. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents to Item 61? Please come forward, provide your name and address, and your testimony. Just for those who are coming, we have a three-minute time period for testimony. So, if you have any remarks that exceed that time length and have them in writing, please offer them to the clerk, and they will be made a part of the record. May proceed.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. It's my first time here, so thank you for all of the information. My name is Hallie Taylor. I live at 1416 South 16th Street here in Omaha, Nebraska. May I ask a couple of questions before my time starts, or is that not allowed?
The rules of the council don't allow that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
But your time will begin now that you've given your information.
Thank you. I'm a private citizen speaking with public concern in relation to Number 61. The $25,000 to use for night vision equipment for the. the twenty-five thousand dollars to use for night vision equipment for the Omaha Police Department. The mayor is requesting these funds to pay for only night vision equipment for, quote, "possible threats," end quote. Gene Stothart has increased the budget for the police to a hundred and sixty-two million dollars after protests of police brutality that resulted in additional police brutality. The budget for the Omaha Police Department is more than our public libraries, our human resources, our public works, our human rights and relations, the law department, and additional offices as well. The last thing that my city needs is more funding to the Omaha Police Department. I have witnessed the brutality in this summer's protests and marches for black lives and against police brutality firsthand. Initially, I'd just like to address, because Palermo has my school's mask on, I am a very proud Omaha South High Public School teacher, and I was only drawn to action because the live footage that I saw at those protests involved the majority of the youth of our community. I have watched the youth of my community and nonviolent protesters be terrorized by the police. I have watched them be pepperballed, kicked, pushed, yanked, and oppressed. I physically have also been pushed trying to aid and assist others. I have been pepperballed, I have been tear gassed. Because of the tear gas that was used against nonviolent protesters, including those trying to assist and aid, including myself, I have almost had two months of vaginal spotting, cramping, and bleeding. I am a woman who has a hormonal IUD, an inner uterine device, so I am speaking to a male leadership board here, just so that you are aware that stops or hinders my flow each month, but due to the effects of the tear gas, that is not something my body can no longer control. I have been terrorized by the police. I was present at the Back the Blue Rally where nonviolent protesters were attacked by the police and where known white supremacists and supporters of the Nebraska Good Boys were protected, shielded, and safe. However, the OPD has shown me on multiple times this summer of where their, where people are worthy of their service and their protection. I don't consider myself one. I was present this Saturday night when the Omaha Police Department, during a global pandemic, arrested and detained a hundred and sixteen nonviolent protesters who were marching in justice for James Skirlock and in solidarity with the movement for protesters in Portland, Oregon. I was present on Sunday afternoon from 2:00 PM until Monday at 4:00 AM outside of the Douglas County Department of Corrections as nonviolent protesters were released from their cells, which occupancy were posted at fourteen but filled with close to fifty. I held space for their trauma. Additionally, I addressed each and every one of you a personal email, especially to my representative Vinny Palermo, and have heard no response from anyone. So, who am I? Who am I compared to the elected leaders that I sit in front of and that I respect dearly? I am Hallie Taylor, I'm a private citizen, I'm speaking with public concerns. Item number sixty-one, the twenty-five thousand dollars to use for night vision equipment for the Omaha Police Department.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next opponent, please, and again, are you starting the time? Don't start the time until after they've given their name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Mark Von Drosik, my address is eighteen nineteen Farnham Street. If business owners and other politicians who come up here to testify don't have to give their real address, then I don't feel comfortable giving my real address. And I'd like to start off my comments by saying I have also been terrorized by the police in this city for my political views. I could sit here and list out every incident that the police have abused me, but one in particular comes to mind over the winter of 2017, eighteen, in which I encountered the police on South Fourteenth Street in Little Italy in the complete darkness. They were executing a no-knock search warrant and I nearly rode my bike full speed into them because they were dressed in black, completely hidden in the dark, and they hadn't posted an officer down the street to keep people like me from running right through the gunfight that they started immediately after I left that location. I would love to believe that night vision goggles would've made the Omaha Police Department behave better in that circumstance, but I believe all of the evidence suggests otherwise. Again, I could sit here and list all the times that OPD has brutalized me personally and I was brutalized and arrested on Saturday night on Farnham Street, but I don't think that's gonna be relevant. I think the social scientists and the data that all of you should have at your fingertips if you took a few minutes to Google it would suggest that militarizing the police further helps no one and that this money needs to be sent to housing, healthcare, and education and other social programs which will actually help to prevent crimes. I'm concerned that this body, if it had the option to purchase a computer which could predict people acting on crimes, that you would do that, that you would purchase that and we would be living in a minority report situation. And so, I don't have much confidence that this body's going to take the right decision today and I look forward to testifying about the police budget on August 11th as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
My name is Ashley Underwood, my address is eighteen oh five South Fifty Fifth Street. The amount of funding that has already been given to Omaha Police Department is incredibly irresponsible. When your people, the people who you represent by election, protest against police brutality and the police respond with further brutalization, you do not reward them with increased funding to buy more gadgets they don't need. When public services like libraries have to let go and furlough their part-time employees due to lack of funding, you don't increase the police budget to a hundred and sixty-two million dollars and you certainly don't add an additional twenty-five thousand hundred dollars, well, twenty-five thousand dollars for night vision equipment. When teachers have to beg on Amazon and Facebook for help to make their classroom student-ready, a responsible leader doesn't build a budget like this. A responsible budget created by responsible leaders does not include more funding for police than for public works, human rights, the law department, tourism, human resources, and city planning combined. Omaha's roads are terrible. This is a well-known and often complained about fact. Our roads have few marked crosswalks and even fewer bike lanes. Omaha's response to snow and ice is awful too. If you are so concerned with public safety, perhaps you should invest in our roads. Why is it that the Omaha Police Department has grown by eighty-five percent when our actual population is only grown by seven? How does this make sense? Why do our police have access to armored vehicles and mine-resistant vehicles? Considering this is in response to a nonviolent protesting, this is an incredibly violent response. If tear gas is considered a war crime, why do our police have access to it? A quote that I just think really applies to the situation is, "There's a reason you separate the military and the police. One fights the enemy of the state, the other serves and protects the people. When the military becomes both, then the enemies of the state tend to become the people." In our case, you cannot continue to militarize our police. The police have made it clear that they view nonviolent protesters as their enemy and this cannot continue. Please think about your responsibility to your constituents. Do not allow this increased funding to pass.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
How you doing? My name's Terrell McKinney. I reside at fifty-three nineteen North Thirty Fifth Street. I come here today to speak as an opponent against agenda, agenda item sixty-one. Rather than allocate resources to address poverty, inequality, the city of Omaha would rather equip an oppressive police department with night vision equipment. My district is the poorest in the state, young men and women dying weakly, but instead of addressing these issues, the city would rather devote resources to the oppressive police department. The police budget since 2005 has ballooned eighty-five percent and still, my community is overpoliced and disproportionately represented in our jails and prisons. My community has worsened economically since two thousand and five. You don't solve these issues by employing more cops, you don't solve these issues with night vision equipment, you don't solve these issues with just trying to empower these police and militarizing the police department. You solve these issues by addressing the root causes, something this city has failed to do. I don't wanna hear about projects from the past or anything that has clearly missed the mark. You passed a resolution to push the state to work on affirmative action. It looks good, but why did it take, why did it take the death of a black man for you to do this? These aren't new issues, this has been happening. Police brutality and oppression has been happening in the city of Omaha for years, since I was a kid. Why did it take that? If your so-called community initiative worked, I wouldn't have to stand up here and this city would be looked at as the, the great beacon of hope for the rest of this country, but that's not true. You, the city, council, the mayor, and the police have no right to complain, complain about what's going on in North Omaha. Because if you cared, the police budget would've been slashed last week, but it wasn't. You could've devoted those resources to mental health, education, housing, jobs, workforce development, I could keep going on, but you didn't and you didn't encourage the mayor to, and that's the problem. The, the oppressive police department doesn't need more equipment or funding, it needs accountability and real leadership as well as this city. You all should vote against this item and go have a reality check about the priorities of this city. My people are sick of crumbs and false promises and half-hearted empathy. Give the money back to the state and stand with the people that you were elected to represent. Until then, these protests will most likely continue and you will look, and, and your true colors will be broadcasted across the world. Thank you. All power to the people.
Thank you. Just for the record, under the Omaha City Charter, the city council does not propose the budget. The mayor proposes the budget and presents it to the council, who's there after a public hearing held, which in this case will be on August 11th in this room at 6:30. After that, the council has a right to propose amendments. Some amendments take four votes to pass, some take five. Once the budget's adopted, the mayor then has the right to review and, and do mayoral vetoes for any change. We then get to reconsider that. Next opponent, please.
Thank you for your time. My name is Neil Duffy, five eight seven zero Bancroft Street, District Three. I come here strongly opposing Resolution 2020-0733. On Saturday evening, I was arrested and detained for almost twenty hours on what could've been a simple citation. Instead, the Omaha Police Department defied the law by arresting a hundred-plus people and dumping us like trash into archaic system, one that placed forty-plus males into a single holding cell for forty-five-plus minutes during a global pandemic. Considering further arming our police forces when we desperately need to direct resources towards pandemic response and racial justice is embarrassing. Do you want to provide police funding for night vision equipment when the Douglas County Correction Nursing Staff hasn't been properly outfitted with proper PPE since March? The reflection is simple, our elected officials care more about protecting private property and wealth than they do the health concerns and safety to this very community. The entire unjust system that upholds white supremacy and continues to oppress black, brown, and working people is slowly crumbling. We are the new infrastructure, we hold the knowledge, the compassion, the empathy, and the strength to rebuild this broken society. Our elected leaders have stood by silent and benefited themselves. If you believe that paramilitary response and mass incarceration are proper actions to address peaceful protests, you are misrepresenting the state and this community. Equality before the law is this state's motto. As elected officials, you are held to a higher standard. By passing this agenda item, you are confirming that you've lost touch with our community. It's time to unlearn, relearn, or you'll end up on the wrong side of history and come November 2021, your positions will be dismissed.
Thank you. Just, just for the record, city council and mayor elections, there's a primary in April of 21 and a general election in May of 21. And the new council and mayor were sworn in in June of 2021. Next opponent, please.
Sarah Brumfield, twelve ten South Twenty Fifth Ave. I stand in opposition to item number sixty-one. I realize that this resolution has already been approved by the mayor and that the funds are coming from a 2018 Nebraska Emergency Management Agency State Homeland Security Grant, but I ask the city council members and the people of Omaha to ask themselves this, why now? Why are funds from a grant awarded for the purpose of preparing, preventing, responding to, and recovering from terrorist attacks and other disasters being accessed now? There have been no recent attacks on Omaha. The only disaster that comes to mind within this timeframe was the flooding in 2019, though I fail to see how night vision goggles ordered over a year later are somehow related to dealing with any remaining flood damage. When reviewing the documents of this revolution, however, this resolution, however, it was interesting to note the date of the initial bidding materials, June 17th, 2020, approximately two weeks after the initial protests in Omaha. Are we to assume that the Omaha Police Department and the city of Omaha now consider peaceful protesters to be a threat? And what guarantee do we have that the police will use twenty-five thousand dollars' worth of night vision goggles responsibly when they already demonstrate the ability and ease to misuse and abuse their current equipment, such as the plastic zip ties which were kept on many of the over hundred peaceful protesters arrested Saturday night for upwards of eight hours, resulting in short-term and even potential long-term damage? Or tasers, such as the one that was deployed twelve times by an officer and was instrumental in the murder of Zachary Bear Hills in 2017? Is there no better use of this money? Is a global pandemic not adequate enough as a disaster for the purpose of a grant, especially in the wake of Douglas County experiencing nearly a thousand new cases just last week? As someone who went to physically observe the arrest Saturday night because I live less than a few blocks away and witnessed the utter lack of masks being worn by the officers at the scene, I did the work for the mayor and the city and determined that that twenty-five thousand dollars could purchase seventy-one disposable masks per officer. Or, in the interest of being more environmentally friendly, it could purchase one high-quality reusable mask that comes with five filters. I urge each of the city council members to consider what happened Saturday night. This was not the first time we witnessed the use of violent force against peaceful protesters by the Omaha Police Department. Do you really believe that gearing them up with night vision goggles is being done in the best interest of the people? Or are you failing to see what is happening across the country as more and more cities are experiencing militarization of their police force? As someone who is white and cisgender, I speak today from a place of considerable privilege. I am able to attend this meeting at 2:00 PM on a Tuesday. I can share my words without fear of censure or retaliation and I will use that privilege to make you, our elected officials, or any other white person who willfully chooses to turn a blind eye uncomfortable. I will be the thorn in your sides and I will not stop until my black, indigenous, and Latin ex-relatives see justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Hi, Amy Sand, three one one eight North Forty Ninth Avenue. I oppose item sixty-one, purchasing roughly twenty-five thousand dollars of night vision equipment for the Omaha Police Department. I urge you not to give any money to this organization until a full independent investigation is done into their conduct and there is real transparent oversight of their operation. The atrocities of this weekend did not happen out of thin air. These acts of oppression were organized and deliberate and so likely practiced and perfected before this night. There are not a few bad apples, bad apples acting independently, but rather the fruits of OPD's labor. Where we invest our money as a city, we state and practice our values. I do not want the value of our city to include unlawfully and violently arresting citizens. If we continue to hand OPBD money, we support their behavior by directly funding it and sanctioning it. Please give the money back to the state and vote against item sixty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Nathan Scott, ninety-two eighty Z Street. See, our community's in a lot of pain and I stand in solidarity with everyone who spoke as an opponent here. I back everything they say. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King said, "A nation that continues year after year to spend more money on military defense than on programs of social uplift is approaching spiritual death." Now, you may say there's a big difference between the military and our police, but when I look around, I see armored vehicles, I see police being militarized. And as a former cab driver, I used to give poor people in East Omaha rides for free all the time because our city transportation is failing them. They can't get the jobs that they need to get to. Maybe we could give them rides in these armored vehicles. Dr. King also said, "A budget is a moral document." Dr. King also said, "A budget is a moral document." So I want to ask you, what are our morals as a city? The police, the majority of the time, they're responding to crime. They're not preventing it. And I think that is obvious when you take to note from 2005 to 2018, our city grew by 7%, but our police budget grew by 85%. Has crime went down at anywhere near that rate? I think the answer to that is obvious. It's my belief if Dr. King were here today, he would be standing in solitary with protesters and he would subsequently, like the protesters, be shot with pepper bullets, tear gassed and arrested for his non-violent stance. JFK said that "Those who make peaceful revolution impossible will make violent revolution inevitable." Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please. There are people snapping your fingers. I would remind you that the Council, the rules prohibit such.
Counselors, good afternoon. Counselors, good afternoon. My name is Scott Williams. I live at 3820 Jones Street and I'm represented by Counselor Jarom. I'm here today in opposition of Agenda Item Number 61, the expenditure of $25,865 for the Omaha Police Department. The council provides no opportunity for public comment on issues facing our community, no matter how pressing. While I believe this is a mistake, I acknowledge the policy and will keep my comments tailored to this very single expense. The basis for my opposition is the question, how will this expense serve our community? How will this expense have protected the life of James Skirlock, who was murdered on our streets? How will this expense protect the First Amendment rights of people who are peacefully protesting in our community? During my last opportunity to address the council several weeks ago, I spoke in opposition to an extended emergency declaration. I expect that some of you remember that at that time, I warned that the threat of creating laws just so that people can be charged with a violation of something was pressing. Frustratingly, maddeningly, just this very week, we saw that exact situation play out in front of our eyes. Nonviolent protesters were entrapped on our streets for the potential actions that may have occurred. This was the stated reason for arrest by the police department in news reports. I'm confident that all of you read that news report. People who were beaten with clubs and fired upon at close range. Mr. Vondrasik, who spoke to you moments ago, was too modest maybe to simply turn his back so you could see the wounds inflicted upon him. I had a good up-close view of the bruises across the backside of his body and I know for a fact that there are many others that are covered. If you'd like, I'm sure he would be more than willing to highlight those injuries that were inflicted upon him just this week. Perhaps, like so many others, he has suffered police brutality so often that the three minutes was insufficient for him to cover all of the incidents, including just this very week. How will this expense in front of the council protect citizens from imprisonment in abhorrent conditions? 40-plus people held in a cell with a capacity for 16 in the midst of an infectious public health pandemic? How will this expense protect people in our community who are experiencing mental health crises? How will this expense protect people like Zachary Bear Hills from losing their life at the hands of the Omaha Police Department? How could these funds be better spent in our community? Could these funds be redirected? I believe that they could. I believe that they should. I appreciate the detailing from Counselor Jarom of the city budgeting process and I encourage all of you to avail yourselves of your responsibility to defund the police, to redirect those funds to channels that would better protect and serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next opponent? Are there any more opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilwoman Gray, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. If the officer would come forward, please. I think, you know, first of all, well, I got a couple of questions for you, first of all. Let me, I'd like for you to just outline what the intent of this proposal is going, what would the... First of all, I think people need to recognize that this is a three-county area.
Correct. Captain Mark Duster.
Where the equipment is going to be used. It's not just the Omaha Police, first of all. So let's establish that. And now establish for me, if you would, what the intent is with this particular purchase.
Actually, the equipment will be held in Omaha and will be distributed to the Omaha Police SWAT team and bomb team. This is not military equipment. This is equipment that anybody here can buy. It is simply night vision equipment. It's not night vision goggles. It's nothing that attaches to any of our uniforms. It's not a flip-down type thing that you see on TV and it's not a weapons-mounted system that you see on TV or in movies. It is simply a monocular to either intensify light or help us identify heat sources. Part of the investment justification is counterterrorism. That is part of it. And no, there has not been any terrorist attacks in the city of Omaha recently, but usually they don't tell us when they're coming. So we can't predict that. But night vision equipment has been used by the police department for many years. So has thermal imaging equipment, has been used by the police department for many years. And the most typical use of this equipment is search and rescue to help find people that are lost or help find people that we are looking for. I mean, we use them for surveillance in complete darkness. We use them to find ingress and egress to locations safely. And it enhances not only the police safety, but it enhances the public safety if we don't have to use lighting, if we can find people without challenging them, or if we can find people, challenging them, to have them come to us in a different way so we don't have to go get them.
Thank you. That was all I needed. My next question is to two individuals. Let me see. One is Haley Taylor, Haley Taylor? You don't need, I just wanted to know from your seat, did you file a police complaint?
Well, actually, you need to come to the microphone.
Okay, come to the microphone. I'm sorry.
That's how we make a record.
My only question to you and Mr. Vondrasik, it'll be the same to you. Did you file a police complaint?
Please come to the microphone to answer some questions. And when you do, you just have to repeat your name this time.
My name is Mark Vondrasik and with all due respect to you, Counselor, when you call the Omaha Police Department Internal Affairs to file a complaint with them, they laugh at you. And so I have absolutely no faith in the Omaha Police Department to do anything with that kind of a report. And I'm very interested in my...
Do we have them in the Human Relations Department and in the libraries? Don't we have those anymore? Dr. Thompson? I thought we had complaints in the Human Rights and Relations Department as well as the library.
Again, Counselor, when I've, in the past, when I've gone to make complaints about police behavior to the police department themselves, should I be going to the Human Rights and Relations Department instead? Because the police laugh at you when you make complaints to them personally.
We have a few would stick nearby, Mr. Vondrasik. Haley, would you come?
Haley, did you file a police complaint?
And then we'll have Dr. Thompson come to answer the questions.
Thank you for the question. I would like to be transparent and say, no, that's not a process that I've explored. The experience that I have had with the Omaha Police Department in a very active summer in working towards justice, equity and safety of my students and my community members and my neighbors has proven me that my voice might be valuable in this way. But if heading towards making a report is what's going to benefit my community, my city and my students, then I will be filing a police report. I would love to be walked through those steps because I'm novice at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson? Dr. Thompson is the Director of the Human Rights and Relations Department for the city of Omaha.
Franklin Thompson speaking. Would you repeat the question?
Yeah, my understanding was, or at least I thought, that when we, when, because people had problems going to the Northeast Precinct or to the Central Police Station to get a complaint form. And my understanding, at least a year or so ago, was that there were complaint forms available in the Human Rights and Relations Department and at the libraries. Am I wrong in that?
They are at the library. We do not have them in HR.
Okay, so they are at the library.
But I would entertain having them there if the council so wishes.
I would recommend that that would be a good idea.
Okay.
To have them. But I know they're in the libraries and I thought they were in the Human Rights and Relations Department, too. And it would be my, it would be my, I would prefer to see them in the... I don't think we have to do anything, you know, in terms of legislation or anything to do that. We can just make that happen, can't we?
I believe that that can just be an executive decision.
Thank you.
Yes. I would also like to say that up until now, we have an understanding as a result of interpretation of the Law Department that the Human Rights and Relations Department does not investigate its own. So when we do get a complaint based upon race, gender, sex, sexual orientation, et cetera, we refer it to the state.
Okay. That would be better, wouldn't it? I mean, because we don't investigate our own, there's an outside party that's looking at it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
A good example would be, an example with FIRE about four months ago that we refer to the state. But it's up to the individual to see it through and to carry it through.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have for now, Mr. President. I'll relinquish the floor. I may come back in a little bit.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton?
I think it would be important to note how, because we have a Citizens Review Board. I know I've received a number of emails that said you need a review board for the police, but we actually have one. And I don't know, how do they, is that the same form? Does that go to the Citizens Review Board, Paul? And Mr. Kratz?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. I believe it does, yes.
And if the forms, Councilmember Harding just made a good point with the libraries closed. Is it available online or can we make it available somewhere else?
Paul Kratz, I don't know if it's online or not. I can't answer that. Certainly, the executive branch of this government could put it online.
Okay. If we could get it online?
I suspect it might be.
Okay. I just think that would be helpful for them to know. And then, Officer, I just wanted to cover, because we covered this earlier. I had noted on Nextdoor that I had noticed a little boy. I know we're talking about, there are a lot of accusations of the police being oppressive and whatnot. But there's a lot of things that the police do that are very helpful for our community. There was a missing eight-year-old boy. And is this something, it was at night. I know that they were trying to use, they were trying to get the helicopter, but they were searching for a little boy. And is this something that they would use to search for an eight-year-old autistic boy who's gone missing?
Captain Deslur Omaha Police, yes. It is a tool that can be used. The helicopter has a FLIR, basically the same thermal imaging camera system that you can buy handheld. If that's not available, we can use them on the ground with search and rescue.
And I know I have seen over the last probably six months or so where there have been notices that go out, it's not just children, but we have had older citizens that maybe have been suffering from dementia, some others that have wandered off and needed to be found. And so when you talk about search and rescue, I wanted to put a few examples to that. That unfortunately, in the times we're in, everybody thinks of police as just, you know, monitoring and protests in the city of Omaha. But actually, a week ago today, I was on my way home from our city council meeting and witnessed a car accident. The police officers responded immediately. They were very nice. They were very helpful to the poor girl that caused the accident. And they did good work and they really calmed her down. So, you know, helping people that are in accidents, doing, searching for our missing loved ones, whether they be young or old, are all things that the police department does and that's something that you'll be using these night vision goggles for. And don't you already have them? I mean, you have some, they're just from 2004, '05?
I agree with you, Councilperson Melton. We do do good work. And yes, we purchase these, we have thermal imaging cameras right now that we purchased with the same Homeland Security Grant, 2004. Obviously, it's a piece of technology. Technology advances, things get better. And that's why we want to replace the antiquated equipment that we have now with newer, fresher equipment that works better.
And then I know Councilman Gray, this is, it was a tri-county grant and the Omaha Police Department actually does assist, especially with search and rescue.
Yes, we do.
And SWAT. You assist all three counties.
Absolutely. It is a three-county region that the grant, it's under the umbrella of the grant. But yes, the Omaha Police Department, the SWAT team, bomb team is the primary responder to many of those locations. We certainly provide mutual aid and assist.
Okay. I just want to thank you for that. And again, we're not using money allocated in the Omaha City budget. This was a grant that we were able to get that money and that's all that we can use the money for.
This is correct. We identified this need in 2017.
Thank you, Captain. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say for the record, too, that yes, the forms are available and typically in the libraries, which are closed, but they're also available at police headquarters, the mayor's office, and they are online, I believe, through the Omaha Police Department's portal.
Thank you. I'll just add my comments, a brief. I haven't heard any testimony that the police with the current equipment that they have couldn't continue to successfully fulfill the mission of search and rescue and the other things that they use, the night vision goggles that they currently have. And because of the events going on in our community and the number of people who are really hurting right now in our city, I just think this would be a more appropriate time to hit pause on this request, so I will not be voting for it. Is there a motion? No further lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
No.
Motion passes four to three. Item 64, an ordinance to acquire private property for the purpose of constructing the Nicholas Street Sewer Extension Phase 3B project.
The public hearing on Item 64 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Can I just say real quickly, I think it's important to note that while Ms. Melton here rolled her eyes at Mr. Vondrasik for expressing his own experience with the process, y'all demonstrated that none of you know how it works.
Okay, we're back on Item 64. The public hearing has begun. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 65, Midwest Excavating Services appeals rejection of their bid from July 15th, 2020 for the concrete trails at Standing Bay Lake Project.
Is the appellant here? Please come forward, state your name, address and the basis for your appeal.
Tom Trombley, Midwest Excavating, 9623 Reddick Ave, Omaha. I'm not actually appealing. I understand that the wrong paperwork was put in the bid packet. I just wanted to point out a couple of things about the bid. I don't know if you're going to award it to the third highest bidder or not, but there's about $128,000 difference between the low bid and the high bid, which is quite a bit of money on a project that size.
Right. So the only thing we're allowed by the rules to consider today would be your appeal of your bid rejection.
Okay.
That if the department comes forward with a contract proposal for someone else and you wanted to reappear, to testify on that issue, to point out other items, you're certainly free to do that. But for today, the rules would require you just to address your appeal. And I think I heard you say that you understood that your paperwork wasn't compliant.
Correct. It was not.
So I don't think today would be the appropriate forum to talk about the other issues. But if you have anything else you'd like to add, please do so.
Could I have you at least look at a couple of the bid items and before the award process? And one of them... We are friends with one of the other contractors that bid this and we talked to him. In the bidding process, we were told by this to bid on cutting the trees down and that was in, at least I know, our bid and one other bid. I don't know if it was in the third bid or not. But we added that into our bid proposal and that money in there. Since then, the cities come in and cut the trees down, so it actually shouldn't be in there as a bid item. I can show you on my paperwork that we bid quite a bit of money to do that work and the city's gone in. work, and the city's gone in there and done that. You know, the trees are all down now.
Okay.
So when it goes forward—excuse me, or if it's awarded to that third contractor, it should be looked at that a lot of that work on that job—
It's already been done.
—is already been done.
Similar thing happened on the Field Club Trail Extension, and so I understand what the department did in that case was that they adjusted the deal. But we'll look at that with the Parks Department.
Okay. I just wanted to point out a couple of—I know we screwed up on our paperwork. The bid form was relet through an addendum, and that certain piece of paper wasn't in that second packet.
Okay.
And that's why my projects manager missed it. But again, not—it is our fault that it did not get in there.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item 65? Roll call. I'm sorry, Mr. Pauls. You're recognized.
I appreciate you coming down and trying to clarify things for us. I like your attitude. You're trying to make this better.
Yes.
And I appreciate the effort, even though you will be denied. I appreciate what you're doing. This is what we need to hear, that people out there want to make sure that we are doing a good job.
Well, there is a lot of good contractors out there. It was just a misunderstanding between the big bid specs and the book on what was or wasn't supposed to be done on that job. And nobody—in—again, I think even the third bidder put the tree removal in his job.
Right.
Which would up—I would—my guess, I mean, it was about $30,000 or $40,000. The city has since gone in and taken those trees down, so I just wanted to make sure that that got caught.
Well, thank you for your efforts.
And I won't screw up my paperwork next time.
Thank you, sir. There's motion and a second. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Non-action items, items 66 through 75, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Second. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:12.
Mr. President, I just—when they bring the budget in front of us, like they say, the police come in front of us, will they explain it?
Well, the department directors come on. I think it's the fourth.
It was, yeah.
They usually come and present the highlights, and then they answer any questions.
Does it go here?
Yeah.
After the pass.